Be ten minutes a kano. Ena ma she me mousopa anka niame buha no, sankame fye gua. Anka diya sosu pandemi. Tye. Ghana sofo no. Mounja inse uhu no no. Sofo biya minimi biya kahou bi. Aso biya su sofo kahou. Maye mwen imu yo 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 yo. Ena mudi gu kromha, yehowa beye, yesu beye, yehowa beye. Mounja ina yen yenka. Because muiya ma mbe fo. Ghana sofo, you guys are criminals than the politician. Especially those of you sitting on the National Cathedral Board of Trustees. Isu no opoku ina, you guys are criminals. You guys are criminals. And let none of you stand anywhere and tell us that it's happening. You guys are crooks. You are murderers. You see, you came out to tell us that. And your public donations. In episode. Keneforata went before the ad hoc committee of Parliament of Ghana. And said what? He clandestinely. Put that in the, in the, in his budget. And Parliament approved that budget. As a result. And constitutional. Granted. Etie. Sofo na ya frano kusibu aten. Pacho sheshe Board of Trustees ina mam. Piro mam. Etie, now, the payments of the National Cathedral no, ayay constitutional tiyaji atu. Etisana ete ya sikana wa sofo no ho. Ya siya botdam frif, ya ete midi kabo me me sofo penidi no. Opoku ina, ti sami bo Methodist, any Anglican, any Roman, any Presbya. Emane how, because me, me so peni opoku ina, okahou professor. Ti sami ba wo diya swa, me me papa kura no. Babon din, ti ye ready. Etis a National Cathedral, sikana ya tiyani ayay constitutional Ghana for 401 million Ghana cedis. Ya spending, still the place is a fishbowl. Se se, arahu sami ahonse, a vastati fu, contract any free side. A whole fu. And then plantier, oyo, otin, hemre. Green snake. Cobra. Python. Lizards. Agama lizard. One a diagro. Awa National Cathedral. After spending 401 million Ghana cedis.
Oh, I don't know.
The energy. Of the people. The time. Of all the other people around. Sa calculation no, en kahou. It was a, you are going to quantify everything around the National Cathedral. The food people ate. What dekwa kahou? Donations people gave out. What dekwa kahoua? Ya chum 600 million Ghana cedis. And the National Cathedral. A wefu. Meanwhile, ya won krofuao, wa nomne siye se, wa me ya men of God. In fact, you guys are men of Satan. You, you guys call yourself men of God my foot. You guys are men of Satan. Muiya men of Antwanya ma. Men of Akunede. You call yourself men of God. You hide behind the name Christ, the noble name. That wonderful name. Jesus Christ. And connive and condone Satan dying with political devils. And steal and rob this country. And you call yourself men of God. You guys are men of Antwa. You guys are men of Akunede. Muiya men of ma me wata. Na moti ho. Sanka diwa mutiri moa. Kamumuba akunpo etimia sore. Abekese ya diye ho wa di. Ena diji sikana mon san feri, muti kuaswa dem ko priti. Agradha. Order the prison and say, you know, nibe no wetimia miti. Ka gradha mfi su mjiya si motesu, mudi na popete sumbo nyamidi no. Na wa dafo se patra, na uko. Ka wii ki biya bakun sa, na masia she. None of you are what, gin da li timi, muiya ma khotina so, negana fosu dem, se ya diji mi sa niya deko. Na ma, me me kosa sofo ni biya sore ya. Ka wii weti na nimu aso precha, ni me pie. Because none of you are men of God. You guys are men of Antwa. You are thieves. Everybody saying, ena wa uye nyaminipaa, uye nyami prako. Na ya spending such amount of money. Na moti ho, tim 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 tim, ti se kubea ati ya tofo ma hasai. Mon kahre. Mosha abosu uye nyaminipaa. Uye nyaminipaa, uye nyamiya dre. Na moti ho. Na obia peni forty seven mo. Muti minfa madri niya juma. Etimi niya press conference in po. En kashin chle Ghana for. After you guys, a martina ho. Na mo di si kana, mon kahou ma di. Opoku ina kahou. Me wisi empe siya debe ba me bo bo, e wu mutiri. Opoku, mon fa ma mounja i. Opoku ina kahou. Dankan Williams okahou. Daki Ward Mills okahou. Kusibu aten kahou. Akrofi okahou. Ah i, ah ah, sofo ye obua topan de sa i. Ah i, zofa ma mete sofo ye osa topan kuwa no bui. Mui na mon kahou, ya fa ma ye nyai. You guys are criminals. Ya yana, ya hu no hu na ye. Adana me katya sofo, mi sa mounja san kuasi ye hu no hu na no. Touch not my anointed. Ya ya diya jungu. Ena gu ya swa. Why na ya anointed cha wai wo koma? Akrofu. Uye anointed cha waiya. Sa oba cleric wa omini. Sa akwa, ayaya akonkra, sa crow. E sa omini mi fita, ena just all ya anointed. Akrofu. Men of Antwa. Momoya, mom, momoya nyaminipaa. And you don't have shame. They catch them, okrom hasai. They di na ya bobo aso omokwata National Cathedral, ne swa no. It's a nice way. Of robbing our so-called asofo. Into the fold of corruption. And to corrupt them. Me ama sorry Pentecost, ya fa 1.7 million Ghana cedis ne ko eh. Ya ya tya taeta, na ma se se si kana koyan kuasi ya de, ya kamosi ye muadiye. Ya nyamiya sore ya kahou asem. Nyamiya sore ya kahou asem, nyami si ka, ya diya kuasi ya de. Pentecost 1.7 million. Ya di si kana koyan, ya diya cha ya 1 million Ghana cedis. Ya diya cha ya, ena National Cathedral, fa me katya se, sorry. Sikana diho. Etie, etie, ya eti me twa Cathedral, ne swa. Maybe such a bad record, nyami cha se, 1 million Ghana cedis, wo ni tanasakati. Any, 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 the Executive Council of the Church of Pentecost, 1 million na mo de koye, ne se se, wha ne fulani ya de kono. Me, I will say it. Mi yaswa mi tight, me se tya. Pa siya da mi tya mi tight, me se tya. Pa mo fa kuaswa fa nyamkuasi ya de. Adana, adana, adana ya yi, ya yi apose kosa yi yi, ay, asofo ni biya benima. Aso pe so, ne me ya kana ya si me fa kahou, uno utya me ka bosu me. Asofo ni biya benima hasai, ompe so mu mu na, ma sa ja i. Pe ya niya bafo, ya taka ma uti ne. Ti ja se hu no no. Emme mu na me. Bakubi mi biya ma no fa ba na sofo, bakubi so mi se, wasi koan captain, you go down. Kasama me katya na wo no. There are fine pastors. In this country. But the so-called big ones are criminals. Mosha abosu bo di nyamidi, ene, en sorry University Boa dien cha lego. Check. Akrofu. Aso biya nyami ni ma, ni di si ne di ka. Aso faswa koye, fasting and prayers. One week oh. Ya 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 so, ma di 2.5 million Ghana cedis, muiya mponko. Muiya mponko. Then you guys go hide behind the name of Jehovah Amashia. And lie to us and play the buffoon. National Cathedral. Ena akahuremno. National Cathedral. Akahurem. Pacho, fatiwa, no to su bi na me sorry. National Cathedral. Ena akahuremno. Ya bua ja di for di. Atwegu. Ema abain eti ya rent. Na, abain niwe niwe ase ma kosi si, adaya ma tekeres 71, adaya di fa, omoa Shanti Regi. Enka fono, omunda gotem. Enka fono, omunda gotem. Etie, we are paying huge sums of money. Just for rent. Wa bu bua di no one pe bebi amaja di for rent. Muiya swa, Cathedral ina akahue. Me, I, I, I told my God. That I will support the National Cathedral. You know why? I'm a good citizen, I'm not a sperator. Okay? That my president. Said that. He had an encounter with God. And that the battle is the law. Etie no, Obesi Cathedral. Amenyankupal. Etis Ghana for ina, we should rally behind him. Now look at the lies. From Ashanti Region. Greater Karra Region. Na wa uko UK. Na wa uko London. Omu koye de in. Omu rezif funds. Etie, ayay appeal for funds. So peni Dankan Williams, come to and apologize to the people of this country. I love you and I respect you. Etimi eti me in ko deep. Esesha wo be pe nyami achau. Na wo pe Ghana for achau se, wo ni president is she ayeno, ena den 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 den, ena den 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 den. Papa, with all due respect to you, I love you. Akra Dankan. I love you and I respect you. Papa. Be kaso recha eh. Because, you know why? Asofo di ne who say, abain no, amo meni me chichi from. So they are all afraid to come out. This is the government I am talking about. They would just rope in anybody, everybody with some dignity and integrity. Come join our stealing brigade. So they can bring you down. This is what they have succeeded doing to Reverend Ministers like Opoku ina. Revered and renowned ones like, like, like Dankan Williams. Like, like, like Akrofi. Like Daki Ward Mills. These renowned. Men of God. Edit na mo kofra ama kwato se me ye. Archbishop Charles Palmer Bacher. A revered man of God. Most Reverend Bishop. E John Akrofi de tuasono. Papa bakunu tuasono, onu we gu no wenima se cha sofo biya on Ghana. Former Presby Moderator, if I say, Emmanuel Martin. Oye ni mbiya si ni cha sofo biya, me cha no muiya se mbaye. Then you get to, waiya, most Reverend TK Awatry Pratt. Former Presiding Bishop of Methodist Church. So peni ti se de wenima tiya hofa hofe, eti kro no wen na wati ho na onkare. Reverend Professor Sefas Amenyon. Papa we kura no, tinibe be di june no, no be di Presby Moderator and chair, no yareye. Ma kochi pape ya be she mu kwa. Archbishop Nicholas Dankan Williams, Presiding Bishop and General of the See of Action Chapel International, oye member. At all the city. Papa i. Otinibe be, eh june no. Reverend Dr Joyce, I, Executive Director, Salt and Light Ministries. Ma mi otinibe be. Ma mi said, eh, look, I respect this woman so ma se. Mi wusa of friend peda mi ya masheni. Minima se, kuno ome ka. Such a noble woman. Ma Robino into your, your brigade of criminals. And look at this wonderful medical doctor man of God. Bishop Daki Ward Mills. A huge man of substance and integrity. Presiding Bishop, Lighthouse Group of Churches. Talk of Reverend Isudanaba. This man, I, 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 I go on social media and tell me ya be wu ya me typing, just to get something from him to listen to. Founder and President of the Isudanaba Ministries. A great man of God. Papa we no take convention and see preachi, eh wo si le, tamale, to be precise. Na ya friend wo convention, asya katya de se. Wo yere, wo manin drive ane ba, wo ma be ya accident, wo manu wo ma u. Asore, asamo, sore jula hoka ina se, let the dead bury their dead. Ya ya nyamiye juma. He stood on his foot. Preached the word of God. Encouraged the people whose husbands and daughters and wives were there with them. Na onu we lucine ba. Anani ma. Such a noble man of God, somebody who carries the unction of the authority of the Holy Spirit. You have roped this man, an innocent man of God, into the fold of this brigade of criminals. Reverend Victor Kusibuati, you have questions to answer, I will not talk about you. Reverend Dr Frimpa Manso, General Superintendent Assembly of God, oye member. Omone koto, momai wu ya, ewo galamsesa iti kobo mpayeno. This man, Fabra 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 Fabra. This man. Reverend Frimpa Manso. Sa o chi wo tinasi, na o bye bye babu mama wa. Asa Bible niye chro no, de Frimpa Manso ho. Aso kahou niya sheshe Bible. A very noble man of God, respectable man. That man Robin such a man. Into the fold of criminals. Afe brafomo ona konyo opoku ina ma me. Dabi dabi, brafom brafom. Bra 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 bra. Mo, bra bra ba kakranene ni mu na homo, mo. Apostle Professor, Osasue Doctor, opoku ina, former Chairman of the Church of Pentecost. Ma me kasa muntio. Pentecost, eh i, ya friend say, Convention Center si wa no. Ya papa opoku ina ni siye. Ya mba for de, ask a church to build that facility. Order in kakran kakra. In kakran kakra. In kakran kakra. Aso si kana kakran kakra. And we see Pentecost Convention Center, Millennium City. It's a whole community. Chabano opoku ine fiya konya, su no wa chro, num 217. And ya diya ma the Church of Pentecost. Odano tinaniya nyame kasachi de no, otinaniya, na wa chro theme song. He's a revered man of God. Asofo ni bebe krasu no, no be si ne, even though he's not the Chairman. Somebody we love, somebody we cherish, somebody we respect, somebody we revere. Na ma Robino, an innocent man of God. Into the fold of this brigade of criminals. Brainless, useless thieves. Na mo de na kofra. Etie ya ne. Ubu asofo ye ni mu diya. Nentofo, eh posa wo be su nyame. And all these men of God, noble ones. Asa namo kasakra, bakubi wo. Oh, preacher, first no, the two social media, ayira swa be ten minutes. Ne nipaa be be ten thousand ya kohre. Se se fifteen, kura huwa yene de. You know why? The people are angry. Dr Paulo Poku Mensa, Executive Director. Ya wa, etie hasai. Wa maya press conference, adaya so, Ghana ni biya contribute, hundred Ghana, hundred Ghana mutirisu. One event ya me. After 401 million Ghana cedis. Afe kosro, broni bi teho. Consultant for the United States, consultant be ya. Adana ya si school, daya ye nyakonsortant for Russia. Na ya si National Cathedral, they are consultant for the United States, Gary Sammes. Architect in the down. On the wajidi 12.5 million dollars, eh twenty four. Twenty four million dollars for designing the National Cathedral. Architect, we are charging 10% or more. Of the project costs. Ti soji twenty four million dollars they are. Assuming without admitting. Na cha se, 240 million dollars si ya di be si National Cathedral. Etie divided time, na National Cathedral, oma spendi 401 million Ghana cedis no. Na dollar no, eh 7.3. Etie divided 401 million by 7.3. Na cha se, sikasasi ya di tya National Cathedral ni na no, ye wye by ya di. De pe se, maybe sa Board of Trustees, they say. Eh ya mpassa bua na mo kofa fi Israel ba, na eh 3.9 million dollars. Abo, ma kosa sa bo, eh fi Israel. Eh bua, eh fi Israel, 3.9 million dollars, ya kosa sa bo. Na me bu se se, Pentecost, aso da nakese de si ati motana, ya bompa yu ma nyamitiye no, ya de bua fi Israel ne ba eh. Dabi, ya de bua, eh fi Israel be si ati mota center. Machion Temple siya suka. Adana ya kofa bua, enfri Israel ambe si se, eh bua eh fi Israel be ba na be ba nyami be ti ya kha. Adana, eh i, eh i, Bantama. Aso da in kakrakana esiwano. So peni Abraham Lincoln, oh, so peni miru afini di me dono dono. Ya di ne ko Netherlands. Obedru Ghana, ya transfer ni fi wa ba, ya politics in ti. Ano walking straight to the M S, he say, ya transfer ma ba Ghana, me ya Ghana ni. Why ya me citizen? Mpacho, me mpae. Me, me yere, me ma. Ya mpae citizenship no, ya Ghana for. Mounje, no akosaranda. Apostle Ango, me da se. A L Ango, Abraham Lincoln Ango, such a man, no akosaranda. Pacho, aso da in kakrakana osi ye, ewo Bantama no. Pacho, ya de bua, eh fi Israel ne ba eh. Anglican fa aso da ine si kumasi, ene kleyha no. Pacho, ya de eh bua, eh fi Israel ba eh. Daki Ward Mills, na sore di. Ye, Dankan Williams, asore di. Isu Anaba, asore di. Ya de bua, eh fi Israel, ene be si ye. Ti se 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 se, u si aso da na wan kofa bua, eh fi Israel ama. Obo mpaya nyamitiye, ome kongkro Israel. Etie aso da na wa Ghana ha no, eti Ghana ni na u kwa so ne di, wo sofo pe so katya se. Eh bua eh fi Israel ni di inim, ti wo bo mpaya, nyamitiye, cha da na samakojya de draws, ewe yuha pakasno. Ti ro ma, aso da ina diya compare bua, eh fi Israel. Etie mo de 3.5 million dollars, akosasabu, eh fi Israel. Ya be gu Ghana, emfa swo biya ma bua, so, after three years, National Cathedral, ena eh ho, asati fu. Men of Antwa. Have just two minutes to run up, and let's see. Bible si se, nipaboni fodi oma yene swa. Oma yene pray. Nipaboni no ya president enkua, o mpika, o minister kha, asofo peni for, eh kahou. Cause one way in dancha for, wo di oma ya, ayo nyame ma iso. And listen. Mama nyame sum, ayaya, awo Ghana. Ose se se, mo kwa sore ya nipama. Ose se, nipabe bebe kwa sore. Cheki, offering, se de si, eh swa si shai. And ye se, yasiya ya diyo, it is because asofo peni for na maya who sa, no, sikano, mona mu diye. Ha, na bua jo fine. Se se no. People are being wise, paying tithes. Giving offering. It is because asofo peni for no, eh suni bayan modan ne di no, eh mu nyami juma. Ah, etie, asofo peni for na omoda. National Cathedral aso no, moment me akobi ni ma se biu. Ah, mo biya ma no pe. Madri ni brigade of criminals. Moment me ka kuwa kubofa asem. Mi ya sofo mi fre, mi ya kukudro ti mi fre me. Say, I didn't know bo for ya wa damfo. Do you have to choose my friends for me? Because you are an apostle? Can you choose my friends for me? Did you choose my job for me? Na oba for ya madam for, eh, oba for be koswa ya madam for da, me koswa pe, oba for asem da, eh, me kuwa kubofa, oma me wan si de da. Otoka sema krofor, ma katya se, I don't need a car from you, I don't need anything from you. I just like you and love you as an individual. I don't need anybody to come and advise me about kuwa kubofa. I don't need goddamn from him, I like him and he will continue to be my friend. You can go to hell. Me ko oba for sore ho da, me tonum da, because me voice, ne nyawo, na ode ma me osuro, na di cha me. And nekwa ya tuzi, me ko oba for sore. Kuwa kubofa, me ba. And abaya sore, abaya ati mota moa. Ghana for ina, mo ma si mi ya kuwa, eh kuwa kubofa sore ho ati mota, ye ina eh kuwa ati mota. Na mo asofo peni for kwa, ma kwa tsa tsa si so, eh pokro no. Can you guys talk about obidi kuwa kubofa? Ebereza da kwa ya do. Busi eh, otu eh bua busu. Ebereza se se, de bua busu to the 3000. Ya be advertama free. Tunato. Because if you guys are sitting on a 401 million Ghana cedis wasted for nothing. And you guys cannot come out to tell us anything in this country. You guys are criminals. You guys are criminals. Ya kopo na bank wa he, ye ye ni se sikana ya tya wa aso de no, me me di nyame gin, ene tya sikama aso re no. Ba me ni se ya di nipadjin, ene che. Se biye, me me ba for de wa sore ya. Ana mi tya mi tighter, me di nyame gin, ene tya ne bu. Ba me ni se, mo di nipadjin, ene distributi sikano. But me ni sa mo di nipadri, ene distribute si kano. Asofu no mane yenka. De nyamia si say, metimia shemhoso ne man fire. Cause, na, na pesa me shemhoso iti ma, bo nyamim paya, metimia shemhoso ne Tuesday. Miya nyamin shira me ne.